All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order September 9th, 2013. Roll call, please.
Joe.
Here.
Bill. Addison. Ralph.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Mary Jane.
Here.
Okay, we're going to amend the agenda here a little bit so we can have another meeting later on, so Susan, if you'd like to pick your standard, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Basically, I'm here to kind of update you a little bit on the street project. The milling is scheduled to take place on Wednesday. The milling unit will be here. They're going to be continuing the sidewalk work. Then they'll come in with the paving and they'll do the wedge as well as the paving on East Main Street and then the paving on Shady Lane and on Lincoln Lane. Bill or Bob Spitler from Wagner Paving was here today, looked at Shady Lane and he looked at Lincoln. We're probably going to recommend what's called an edge mill, which is where they basically come in and mill the edge off where the gutter plate is and then we won't mill the middle because there's next to no asphalt there anyway. There's only about two to three inches, so you're going to basically be milling into your base anyway. By doing that, we save the gutter plate, which allows the drainage to still work, but we'll end up crowning the road a little bit. Both of those streets are really relatively flat, so crowning them probably is going to be a better thing than worse because it'll help the water shut off a little bit, get them into the gutter and then let it run down. So I really think that's probably the best thing to do considering the fact there's not that much asphalt there to begin with. It'll probably decrease the milling by about a third. I do have a change order this evening here for you for the whole thing, which once we get done them, we'll adjust it backwards, but in order for them to be able to proceed, we do need to pass the change order. The change order also includes the step at Bud Reed's and the step at the apartment building, which we talked about before and you guys had approved before, at $750 for the Bud Reed garage step and $350 for the concrete step at the apartment building that replaced that old wood step. So the total change order is $110,183 even and that includes those two items plus the planing, the tack code, the intermediate asphalt and the surface asphalt addition for Shady Lane from the cul-de-sac to De Frederico and then Lincoln Lane or Lincoln Street, I forget what it's called, Lane, from the cul-de-sac to Wren, where we stopped there at Wren. So if somebody wants to make a motion to accept that change order, please.
Does this come to everybody or?
No, that's the four that he needs to sign. But if you guys want to look at them more, then welcome to pass them around and look at them.
We're buying you.
Is all standing?
Yes, they are, because I have to have four originals.
First two questions, I need a motion, please.
I made a motion to be approve a change order amount of $110,183 for the removal of plate steps, remove wood steps, additional planting, planing, additional tack code, additional reinforced asphalt, additional surface asphalt.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes. You need to sign those, all four of them, five, all three of them. Today, they also did some base repair. We had a couple places on Main Street and on Washington Street when the asphalt truck was here, that the base gateway, so they did do some base repair in a couple places today and that wound up being an extra cost, but it was something that we needed to do in order to stabilize the street base before we do the paving and the wedge. We've also, we're still need a price on the retaining wall and I think Rick's kind of handling that at this point. I have given him the spec, the last spec that we got from Prograde and I think they quoted this retaining wall at $9,500, so Rick's going to kind of look into maybe getting a different price from somebody else outside the contract. Thank you. Also, we've talked with Prograde and basically told them that we need them to have everything except any kind of final cleanup done by the 20th, so that there'll be about a week in there for the Apple Fest, for the street sweeper and whatever kind of final cleanup that we need. Their contract actually gives them to the end of September, but we've asked them to try to be done by the 20th, so that's what they're hopefully working hard to accomplish. Does anybody have any questions about the project or anything that's going on there?
Did we get another price on that entrance way to the basement?
I think my understanding is that I think that he's talked with you and Billy about that and you guys were going to get some type of a cover for that?
Yeah, we've got that taken care of. I don't know if Bud Reed's, yeah, we're, we're, through the steel plate, we're going to have a wooden plate made, have a vent to overtop that. We got recessed, we're going to set it down to flush and then we're going to counter some locks on the side so people can't remove it, so that's taken care of.
I thought, so I thought he's had told me you guys have taken care of that on your own, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, other question? Okay.
So grinding will all be anywhere?
Yeah, they'll come in and grind everything everywhere.
And they're coming in for the paving and everything?
I don't know exactly what the paving schedule is, I didn't hear. It probably really depends on what the milling takes. I would say, probably Friday at the earliest and they could maybe do the paving on Monday and Tuesday of next week, so I don't know for sure.
Looking good, so.
But the idea is that the paving, over the milling and the paving will all be done and hopefully there may be some topsoil and seeding and some things like that that are left out to the 20th, but I want the sidewalks done and everything so that when you have the Apple Fest, rather than minus some grass, you know, everything, you've got the new sidewalks, the new streets and you've got that to show to everybody, so.
Okay.
Especially, the other thing I wanted to let you know too, I did find out this afternoon that the scoring, the final scoring sheet came out in advance of Thursday's meeting with the issue two people and you were ranked number seven of 29 projects that were funded. So the funding for the West Terry Street project will come through. Kind of thinking about that in advance, there's a little section of that that'll be left down there at the end and I did some estimating, we're probably talking about $47,000 worth of work down there, so you might kind of keep that in the back of your mind for CD BG money next year. That'd be a nice little amount of money, you know, if you could put in five or 10 and ask for the rest from the county, that would be a nice little project for them and we could tag team it with your issue two money, so. Yeah, I'm just going to keep that in mind, but I did want to let you know that was good news that we found out today, so.
Good.
Anyway, then that's all I have.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, does everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last meeting and so need a motion to accept?
Someone?
Sir, a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the warrants and payroll timesheets?
I'm busy.
House owner.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Need a motion for approval transfer of the police revenue and marital fund, the police fund of $1,380?
I'm sorry.
I can tell.
Roll call, please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Approve the police fund, monthly operating funds transfer? Motion, please.
Senator.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the interest transfer?
So Lou.
Sir, a second? Roll call, please.
Joe.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Okay, next is Peggy Crabtree. Please.
Thank you. Hi Peggy. Hello. I'm Peggy Crabtree. I live at 123 East Main Street and I'm stopping in today to talk with you about a tree that we had there. In 1998, the city of Eaton went around to property owners in their city to ask them if they wanted a tree in front of their house. Well, the owner said yes, but then my son bought the property a year later and the tree was planted while he was at work. Well, they didn't want the tree, but the city of Eaton said, "Well, do with it whatever you want to, just so we don't have to dig it up." So we took the flowering crab apple to our property and planted it, so it's about, it was about 15 years old. And when Prograde came along to work on the project, I asked them, I said, "You know, what about my tree?" They said, "Well, it's in the plans to stay," so I was happy because it's a beautiful tree, you know, blooms and it's great. But then a couple weeks later, Mayor Rick paid me a visit and explained that no one in the village had been allowed to keep their tree on all of these rebuilding projects. And he said that there had been, you know, something passed and I could come down here and I could get a copy of the approved tree list. I thought, okay, that's good. So I did get the paper and tonight I got the tree list and I do see that my tree is on the small tree list, the white flowering, says great for urban use, so I'd like to see if I can replant a new tree where the previous one was.
As long as the tree meets any of this, from the ordinance that we passed in 2007, if the, if the tree is on this list, that is made to grow down, there will be no issue with replanting the tree, as long as it's one that grows down and not under the new sidewalks. So as long as the tree is on here, there's none of issues.
You all agree?
Yes. That's what that, yeah, that's what that is.
Hopefully someday we can go down and plant more trees that we took out, we just haven't had the money to do so. Eventually, hopefully, we'll come and leave some money at some point in time that we can go down to Washington Street and plant some of the trees in some of the green spaces that we have that is on the list, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to do it up to this date, but hopefully someday we will, so.
Okay, and that'll be in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Linda Ray.
I'm Linda Ray and I'm here on behalf of the Apple Fest Committee, seeking the council and mayor's permission to make a slight change to our parade. We're going to begin at the cemetery, come down Washington Street, but we want to turn at the Red Front and go up Walnut Street to Spring and go north on Spring Street and disband at the Catholic Church. We have permission from the Catholic Church to do so and that's why I'm here. And if anybody doesn't have roshers, I'd like for the council to have some on the Apple Fest. Thank you.
Does anyone have an objection to the parade route? I don't think anyone's going to object to that and hopefully for this season, we'll have things in order for you on Main Street there for the car show and everything, so we've been kind of shoving them, we've been telling them about the deadline, so hopefully everything to be ready for you folks when the Apple Fest goes on, so I see no issue at all with the parade route.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Rebecca, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name.
My name is Rebecca T. Meyer and I, my address is 302 East Main Street. I don't live there, I pay rent there, but on July 10th, across from 7:30 a.m., my dog Rascal was shot in my backyard three times. I called Chris Driver, after they shot my dog, they took him off the collar, laid him on my porch, my kids were in the house asleep. Driver didn't see anything about the gunshots, didn't go ask anybody if they seen anything, heard anything. This dog was my family, my life, and I'm just scared now for my safety and my kids. On the report, it says there were several juveniles at my house. When Chris Driver arrived, there were two juveniles, one was my daughter, she is 12, and one was my son, he's 11. That was it. On July 20th, I got a phone call and it says, "This is Patrick Buckley's sister. If you don't quit going down there asking questions about my brother, I will find you, hunt you down, find you and beat your F and brains in."
Excuse me, just a second, and before we get too far along in this discussion, what exactly is it you're bringing, you're asking from the council this evening? Because if you have-
More safety.
If you have an issue, if you have an issue with the police department, then we have a safety committee that this should go before.
It's not the police department, it's just one individual police officer that I can't call if I feel like I'm being threatened.
There again, we need to-
I'll try to call you.
We need to address the safety committee with issue, because this is something that the safety committee handles, this is not something that will come before council.
Okay, I'll try to call you, and I spoke with you on the bound.
I do remember you calling me, but I don't remember you asking me for a meeting with the safety committee.
You said you would get back with me, you never did.
You issued a, you said you had a problem, I asked about the problem, I inquired about that, but you did not say anything to me about that, so I'm going to meet with the safety committee.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
If we have an issue here regarding the police department or an officer, if you would like to schedule a meeting-
Yes.
...with the safety committee, then we will do that and you can come in and talk with the safety committee and then we will discuss that at that point, at that place, the council is not-
Okay, I didn't know, that's why I'm asking, because, yeah, I don't feel safe.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you would, we'll set up a safety committee meeting for you.
How do I do that?
You can contact the chief or me.
I can't contact you.
Well, I'm hard to catch up with, but you can catch me down at the Red Front usually at that number, so, and then we'll set up a day for safety committee-
Okay.
-and express your concerns there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, you're not, you're not here now? I pay rent there, but I don't live there. Okay, I'm just thinking about your children, you're not there, we're not there, okay.
Can you be here Wednesday morning at 9 o'clock?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wednesday, this Wednesday at 9 o'clock, we've got a safety committee arranged. If you will be here, we will take the issue up then.
Do you need a picture board?
Just, if you'll attend the meeting, we'll discuss whatever's taking place at the meeting and the safety committee.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. John Moran.
Yeah, my name is John Moran, I live at 111 Hudson, here, you can have for 18 years. I'd like to know why the council, well, I get the creeks cleaned up in this town and there's an ordinance on the books. We've taken dirt outside of the town and dumped it in our well-filled area and when it rains, it's going to come right back into Shank's Ditch and I think that creek needs to be cleaned, there's debris, four-by-fours, signs, diapers and everything down in that creek. And nobody seems to care, but there is an ordinance y'all have about keeping the property clean and it's high time that y'all got busy and got it done, before we have a flood like we did a few years ago.
What property are we talking about?
Oh, Shank's Ditch.
I live on Shank's Ditch, I have Shank's Ditch run through my property, if you want to go over and look at it, it's spotless.
Well, my neighbor's is spotless because I help her keep it clean, too.
So it's really, and what I can see, a lot of that goes back to individual property owners-
Right.
...keep his own ditches cleaned.
Well, it's supposed to be, but the Army Corps of Engineers, when they rebuilt it after the flood, turned control over to the town, the town then controlled-
That's not correct.
The town or the county did that?
The county, the county took control of Shank's Ditch and the county now is trying to lay that back onto the village, which we are in contest with them.
Well, and your property ordinance here states that anything over eight inches on the property is considered, "All premises and exterior property shall be maintained free from weeds and/or plant growth in excess of eight inches. All noxious weeds shall be prohibited. Weeds that shall be defined as grasses, annual plants and vegetation, other than trees or shrubs, are right, however. This term shall not include cultivated flowers and gardens." Now, my neighbor, she put a lot of flowers into hers and we keep it clean. Go to the other side of the street and you'll see four-by-fours, ladders, fence, diapers and all that's going to build up when that runoff comes back into town. And the tree, the creek down here at the other end of town, south end, is just as bad. I've walked both of them, all the way down here to the Blue Bridge and down to the Railroad Bridge. There's something needs to be done with that before we have a flood, because it's not going to take much for that to back up and put everybody underwater.
Well, it's a county's responsibility and not ours.
Well, I mean, everybody's blaming everybody, you know, and then a few years ago, they redirected water coming off of the Cardinal Hill up there and put a pipe in and stuck more water in the Shank's Ditch, which wasn't a real bright move.
Well, I live, like, where else would you propose the water?
It should go-
Not in a ditch.
It goes into the ditch at Regal's.
I live right on Cardinal Hill and I probably have less water in my ditch now since that was done than I did before.
But come down on my street, look at the creek.
They leave down here in Johnny, I'm speaking for my own-
Go down to the Mills's end on High Street and look at it, go down to the library and look at it, you know, walk it, look at it, take a look at it. A bunch of water comes through, it ain't going to take much to jam it up.
I'm right there, I watch it every night.
You know, and-
I walk in my ditch every day.
Now, the last time we had a flood, I lost a driveway out of the deal and two vehicles.
I lost a lot of ground, so.
You know, but I mean, nobody's doing anything about it and, you know, you have ordinances now supposedly on the books.
We may have ordinance, the county's supposed to be in charge of the ditch and we don't have the finances to take care of the ditch, so, you know, there's a controversy, you know, that was, that was a terrible county to take care of that, and now that their funds are running short, they're trying to lay it off on us and we're just shooting that, we're saying it's still their responsibility.
Well, it should be the property owner, I mean-
Maybe it might be of benefit to remind people in the newspaper that-
Well, you can't even-
...the law is supposed to be responsible.
When it rains, you can't-
I don't want to talk that many hours.
You can't drive down the alley between Hutton and High without it rubbing on your car when it rains or even on a normal day without brushing in the brush. I've cut it back a couple times, but I've got tired of doing it for people, you know. I feel they want to let it flood, let it flood, I got flood insurance, I don't have to rebuild. That's less money for the town, less money for the county, let it flood. I mean, that's the way I look at it, but I think, you know, it's up to the council to take the lead on this and get it done.
If it's the council's responsibility, you're supposed to, it's county's responsibility, no?
It's in the village limits, it should fall under your code.
But the county, like Rick said, the county must take it over.
The bridges are safe.
Oh, yeah, the bridges are in terrible shape.
Kind of out of our hands, John.
Well, I mean, what are you going to do when a bridge falls down?
We're going to close the road and the road-
You know, I mean, you got three of them, it's about ready to go now, I mean, go stand there and-
And if that happens, what will take place, because the county is trying to throw it back on the villages and the villages doesn't have the money to put up a $300,000 bridge-
There wouldn't be more than that, Rick, I know that.
There'll be, there'll be a closed sign put on those roads, that's the only they're going to be able to do.
I mean, some of them are really savage, getting on anything and looking at the rebar and-
Totally understand, but there again, you're talking about $300,000 for a bridge and this village doesn't have any kind of money, so.
But if the property owners would just take the time in the winter, when the leaves are off of this stuff and go in and clean it, they could clean it with one-tenth the effort, you know, but you can't get anybody to do anything. Mary Jane had to get on Robbie and he come down and he picked up a little bit of stuff that he threw in the creek, but he didn't get down the creek and remove the other stuff, it's still there, you know.
And that was a while back.
Yeah, that was a while back, but, you know, you can't get anybody to do nothing with it and-
I got a C D with a Rocky IV that was given to me last year, people took videos. I've been, I've been working, I'm trying to get a grant and I haven't heard back.
I know they like to take our money to county and not give us nothing back, but-
Yeah, exactly right.
You know, maybe take some money from them somehow, you know.
And sending letters, just getting the weeds down, but it says not to touch trees and there are so many new trees that's grown up.
Well, they're all Chinese elm and scrub trees that aren't worth anything, they're not like oak or walnut or anything like that.
But you either go to cut them, you either go to dig them out because you can't spray them, because you can't put the spray in the water.
Right, I know that.
Yeah, you can.
It's one issue after another, depending on what type of spray.
Yeah, you've got to use the, like, kind of spray.
I got, I had called the state on that and they said it was okay to spray, they didn't specify any-
Well, you can't use a sterilizer or nothing like that in there because it gets underwater.
Well, I know that, but I had called the state and they said that you can spray it.
But I mean, I had it cleaned at one time, Spring Street to the middle of Hutton and High and you've got, drove back up, nobody wanted to take care of it. The town helped clean it there at one time.
Yeah.
It was hard being able to haul the stuff away, but it's just getting out of hand and it's just setting the town up for a flood.
Yeah, you're right.
And I want to put it on record, that way if it does flood, you know, I mean, I got flood insurance now, so, let it flood.
The only thing I can do is probably send them a letter, try and get them to cut the weeds.
Actually, I'd love it to flood, because I can take my money, leave town, not have to rebuild and leave an empty lot, no more money for schools.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, second. Police Department handled 85 closer service in office. Committee sent a few reports to, I citations and I am there, there's also found two vehicles and also want to mention, the police department did receive a $200 donation, American Bank in Atlanta. That's all I got. Thank you, chief. Deputy officers, find them. Billy?
No.
Streets, other than obviously we've already discussed tonight, do you have any questions about what's taking place as far as Lincoln Lane or, you know, Billy, had Billy pass out to every household on Lincoln Lane and, wait, you got that done the other day, did he run?
Flyers.
Flyers on everybody's door stating the fact that destruction is getting ready to begin sometime next week to make everybody aware of the fact. Cars have to be off the street and everything, the grinding, the paving takes place, so we have issued information to all residents that it's going to be connected to this, so hopefully they read that. And so hopefully here in a couple weeks, things start looking a little better. Flights?
I don't know.
Okay, finance? No. We still need to do the-
Orders for down there.
Maintenance budget for the additional appropriations for the enforcement-
We do need to move, excuse me, your press, we do need to move some money into Mary Jane's father's plantation because of the additional postage, letter writing, certification, mail to people, she's really worked hard for it.
I don't have any money of all.
In order for her to continue to cite people and, and-
No, I don't cite her.
Orders that have-
I don't have any money of...
In, in order for her to continue to cite people and, and, uh...
No, I don't cite her.
Orders, but, but she does give the note, give notification.
Is there a recommendation for finance for how much money needs to be transferred?
Two hundred. I think that would get us the rest of the year.
Yeah, I still have a couple of properties that need mowed now, and I don't have the money to pay. Or she, we don't have the money to pay.
Is that amount going to be sufficient?
Well, that would not.
I hope so, because I think the mowing season's about over.
Well, would that amount be sufficient for this month, and then you probably come back to council next month if there's some money's needed?
I would think so.
Okay.
A thousand dollars doesn't go very far. I guess it's all gone by June and July.
Certainly does not. If that's the case, then I would need a motion from council to, uh, to move $200 into the sanitation. Uh, general, oh my God.
I'll say that.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Yeah, Mary Jane, yes.
Go back to the streets, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the, we talked last month about paving the code down water across the red front in front of the...
Well, Billy is starting to paint this week. I talked with him this morning about him getting the paint done, and the weeds are all sprayed, all washing, and everything ready for apple fest, so that paint is about to receive.
Okay.
But we had laid off that discussion back there. We had cut that down. One of those parking places down last year for that across the street there at the, uh, the rehab place, because they used to have two. I think we cut it down to one, and then we surgery, because people turn the corner, it was kinda tight on that, so...
It's real tight.
Yeah, so, you know, that'd be paying maybe, so... Is there anything else that's under finance? Uh, actually, there is. We have a, uh, resolution here. Uh, Chris has some, had time coming, and for personal reasons, uh, we, uh, need to, uh, move some money over to cover his vacation, and I have a resolution here that I'll read for that matter. It's resolution number 2013-12. A re- resolution by the council of the village of New Parish, Rebel County, Ohio, to approve a one-time vacation buyout of Chief Driver of 200 hours and five weeks earned, whereas please Chief Chris Driver has a balance of earned vacation time due, and whereas Chief Driver has requested paid for 200 hours and five weeks of this time due to family medical emergency, now therefore, be resolved by the council of the village of New Parish, Rebel County, Ohio, that the village and financial officer is hereby authorized to distribute to the Chief Driver 200 hours of a pure vacation paid. Date is tonight. They have said temporary. Discussion, all?
Block of money at one time.
It, it is, but we, we had it coming to him. He had built up vacation time. He had a medical emergency, and so the money was, uh, we need to approve this and move it over.
We did speak to the auditors' office.
Yes.
About this. Um, you know, the money is there, and, and is due.
And the auditors told us that we had to do this in a resolution, so...
Okay, but I don't, from now on, it seems we need to make some changes, because I think that's...
Well, I have that going out. I have that down to bring my back seat.
No.
Okay. We got to do a little venture in public with it.
So, is there a motion for resolution number 2013-12?
I move that we pass, resolution 2013-12.
And roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Now, I believe we need an emergency for this. I need a motion to, uh, pass the resolution 2013 as emergency, declare emergency for giving the three reading rule. So, roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, Kenny, you have some further comments about this?
Oh, no, but I, I, I feel that we need to, Joe and I, as ordinance people, the county ordinance committee, need to get someone from the board of public affairs and just really go through the employee handbook ordinance, um, get it up to date. I'd like some discussion with the council and the entire board who will bring something back to you. Um, just so, I, I, I feel the same way, Mary Jane. It's not that we didn't want to do this, we did, because it had become accrued and was due. But we don't like to, I don't think it's a very good idea to allow it to build up quite like this. I don't think we have anybody else who has a bill, you know, an amount in this as the chief. The chief can't take vacation sometimes. He has to be the chief. So, there, you know, there are things that, uh, extenuating circumstances that have apparently allowed this to build up, but I think it's something that we need to take a look at, because truthfully, if you have that much accrued, it ought to be put aside somewhere. It can't be used or spent for anything else, and, and it would make a large hole in your budget at times. It's possible they could. I think we're all right with this one, but I do think we need to look at our rules and look at our handbook and look at that ordinance, and I'd like permission to ask for someone to, from the board, to form another committee, and we'll all get together. We'll bring things back here before we ever make any proposals, because I want everybody's input. I want to know how everyone feels about it. I mean, I know how I feel, but, and I'm trying to be fair, and I'm trying to keep us out of trouble, which none of us wants that, but, uh, I think it does need to be reviewed, so, that's all right.
I would like to, you and Joe, would like to, I could suggest probably Kevin Smallwood, and, uh, I've seen the president, uh...
Yes.
Yeah, I was, yeah. Kevin, and you guys get together and, uh...
In the meantime, I'm, excuse me for interrupting, but I would, um, urge you to look at the employee handbook, take a look at the benefits, how they're set up in that ordinance. Some of those things are gonna have to be updated, and, uh, if you have an idea of what is already in there, it'll just make it a little easier discussion. So, if you would do that, I would appreciate it, and there's one here, and I'm sure we can get copies too, at least of this part of it that is right now the most serious thing that we need to gather. We'll take a look at the whole thing, but I think that, that this is the part that really needs to be borrowed.
All right, thank you.
That's the finance, you said, or what else?
No, that's what we have in the wood.
But, yeah, it'll, it'll require both, yes.
Okay, under planning, uh, we have a request here, uh, from the, uh, St. Paul United Methodist Church, and they have been back with the planning commission, and I'm representing the planning commission tonight. We're bringing the council for a vote, and the planning commission recommended going along with this, and what the church is wanting to do is they're wanting to close the alley that runs along, uh, from the alley that runs east and west behind the, the Methodist Church, the alley that runs, uh, north and south, the little driveway where they have the food bank. They would like, uh, to close that alley, and the reason they're closing that alley is they're going to demolition the house there to the west that they own, and they're gonna make a bigger parking lot, and in making their parking lot, they would like to have the alley closed so they can move the entrance down to the middle of their parking lot when they build it, and also the funnel of water with the grave, so the water runs away from the church, so they don't have an issue. Uh, the recommendation from the planning commission is there is no problems with this, but we would need a vote from council tonight to allow them to, so the first step of this procedure is to close the alley, or if they always plan, then they can proceed with their demolition or whatever. So, if there's any, there's the diagram. If there's any questions from anybody?
Do we need ordinance to close the alley, or do we just...
Yeah, resolution, yeah.
I hope we did a resolution. We closed that one between, uh...
No, but you should have. How about she go keep track of it, because you'll have to change it down to the courthouse too.
The last one, when we changed that one on the other side of the street, we closed it, but the property owners each became half owner, and then they took it upon themselves to the courthouse and changed the records. The church is the owner on those sides of it.
That's how it's been done in the past. We have, we have resolutions, uh, closing the alleys.
Okay.
I don't know what they did before, but it's okay with me that they close it, but I...
It seemed to be, last time we, council just voted to close that without relation to resolution. It comes to my mind, I think you very well be right, so...
Well, I think it's an easier record file.
Yeah, yeah.
And to file with.
Well, they're not gonna start tomorrow, so we'll just make, just inform the council what they want to do. We'll make a res- we'll write a resolution.
Pause forever. The courthouse has been wanting, they give you a, a blank map. I've never gotten it done, and I've never, I got so many other things I've been doing, but they want a copy of every alley that's closed, which I think they have that, but some of them are missing. This goes way back, years back.
Oh, well, it's a long time ago.
And I have gotten a lot of the ordinances or the resolutions that closed the alleys. I just never got it written down on the map to give it back to the board at. But this has been a long time ago, too. But as long as they don't complain about it, I guess we don't have to get it done.
Well, it's fine unless you're gonna dispute about something or something else, and then, you know, I think you're just better off to have it written out for me.
Okay. Well, we'll get a resolution for this then for the next meeting, and you guys can vote, council can vote around at that point, but to let you know what the, the Methodist churches want to do, I mean, it really, once they put, move it down and do their, do their parking lot, there'll be another entrance. The people that's still right across, just like they do on the other side now, because I don't think the other side was ever closed when they put the parking lot over there.
It's hard to find where it never was, yes.
Yeah.
So, that left us to believe that there was no without a resolution, but...
I don't think that their parking comes into the alley. Isn't it right there?
It goes up to, it goes all the way up to what Brown's used to live there, or whatever, like their brick house.
That more, less than.
Whatever, yeah. Okay, we'll take a look at it. I'd like to say they're not wanting to start tomorrow, but...
And they'll be tearing that place down before they do anything.
Well, yeah, but they would like to have us close the alley, so they can tear the house down and do the grave stuff whenever we get around, you know. Like I say, they're not starting tomorrow, so we have to talk to that, so. So, we can do that under the commission. That's not an issue. Uh, BPA, we'll see if I can BPA here.
You have, you're not aware of, which I think most everybody is, the House of Whitewater Avenue that's been taken down.
Okay, we will do the, um, second reading of the Chronic Nuisance Premises Property Ordinance entitled only. This is the second reading. Chronic Nuisance Premise and Property Ordinance number 2013-03, and ordinance prohibiting chronic nuisance on premises and properties for the village of New Parish, Rebel County, Ohio. Being ordained and enacted by the village of New Parish, Rebel County, Ohio, cancelled, and it's hereby ordained and enacted by authority same as followed. That would be the second reading.
I move that we approve this ordinance on the second reading?
Or me?
Do we need to vote to approve it?
No.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just read entitled only, and we'll read entitled only third time, and pick a vote on the third.
For me, we used to vote three times.
And it's, it's not a mercy ban here, so we'll let it go three times.
Oh, I like to do that.
Okay, uh, we have some items here that the council has to just declare as surplus items. Uh, now that we have the new dump truck, we want to sell the old dump truck. We'd like to sell the snowplow with it. We'd like to sell, uh, the salt spreader goes with it. Uh, and there's some other items listed here. Uh, the ninety-eight Chevy, thirty-five hundred forty-four dump bed, uh, the snowplow, the salt spreader. Then we have a self-propelled, uh, self-propelled weed and brush mower with an eight-horse brake and strapping motor on it. We have another push mower, and we have a, a sergeant and Salwell four-way traffic light, and we have a large Whirlpool air conditioner that, that we would, I would ask council to declare this a surplus. Uh, we have to do this before we have an option to sell these items. What I would like to see done, and I would propose to council, is like to look into whatever we get out of this equipment. I'd like to see that rolled over towards a salt hopper for the new dump truck, so we can preserve the life of the dump truck by not putting the salt in the bed. We have checked on those. We have no idea what we can get out of the old dump truck, but, um, the blue book one is around sixty-five hundred. I don't know if we can anywhere close to that, and I'll turn off, but what we do, uh, salt blocks for our trucks will be about eight thousand dollars. So, uh, once we sell this, we'll come back to council. I would ask council to consider moving that money, uh, and additional money for street department to buy a salt hopper. I think would be beneficial to us. Uh, it saves the truck. It's a little sa- safer to run around with the bed up, and the bed up in the air. Uh, the salt don't get wet. It don't clump together. It don't plug up the spreader. Lots of bad ones enclosed. There's just a lot of benefits to having all these salt boxes. I think it would be beneficial to us and to the village of money we spent on the new truck. It would be beneficial. It would save the life of that as long as we can. So, having said all that, I would need a motion, uh, council to declare, uh, these items, uh, listed below as a surplus items. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
We have a, uh, training session here for Jaina that would probably be beneficial for her, seeing how she's still learning, uh, financial officer. And this train, uh, training class is for village financial officers, perks and perk treasurers, and the amount for this is sixty-five dollars. This fee includes training material and lunch, and it's being held at Miami'sburg. So, Jaina would like to attend this for, to further her education, and we would need a vote from council to pay for that sixty-five dollars for the five.
Go ahead, go ahead. Why, who would we pay for that? Just go out and pay for it.
Second, roll call, please.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, council, we have, um, people were asking about trick-or-treat. What's your preference on trick-or-treat? In the past, we've always done it on Halloween. Usually that's the same time that Richmond does theirs. Is there any discussion for trick-or-treats?
We don't know when yet, don't know.
We do not know yet. We look, and we cannot find out with that, and typically they do it on Halloween night, but...
I'd call them and ask them. I usually, I have to do it for the chamber anyway, so...
But if you, if you want to set the date tonight, if you want to set the date tonight as same as Christmas night, and what you find out, and it's published, you don't have to have a meeting discussing it.
Okay, yes.
So, we, I would need a formal motion on the trick-or-treat to be set on the same night as Richmond's, so...
Sixty-eight?
Yes, sixty-eight. Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Sometime back, and we've been discussing it for several years now, about early morning sirens, uh, system. Uh, of course, you know, we took the old fire siren, and we mounted it down here. We set it off once a month on... We set it off once a month on a Saturday morning. It's got to be set off by, physically set off by an officer. Some people here, when we do the training, some people do not. I've asked the chief to check into what it would take to move the siren up to the water tower where the whole village would benefit from it. The number that comes back for the equipment, for the sheriff departments to be able to set this off, the sheriff's office without a manual set off is $6,200. And it's 6,206.50. And what I would propose to council or the line is that we put it in the New Parish News and ask for donations. Saying, no, we don't have the money for it. Hopefully, we would get a response from the community seeing how that every morning in a storm situation. We do have a little loaning in the building that I think that we can put in there, but the majority of this would have to come from donations from the village.
Would it be possible to get the fire department to back us with asking for donations to the...
I, that's open for discussion here in the sitting. We're bringing this up to see what council would like to do with this.
I can bring it up to them, first please.
Well, I mean, I just think the more people who are voicing their opinion that it's necessary, the better we may do for something like that. If we knew what we could start it out with and just say, well, this is what we have. And the rest, I mean, I think that would be a plus too. We may not know what we would have to put into it, but which is why we're mounting it. It kind of works sometimes. But I do think that if we get the fire department interested in promoting this with us and, you know, it might, well, it would help better. I think it would help.
We just will promote it now and then get the... This is simply, this is simply open for discussion. Night, see if the council's interested in asking the community for donations. If so, then we can get with the fire department or whoever and get an article put together for the New Parish News next month. And by then, we should have an idea of what kind of base we can start with. And then simply ask for donations from the community for an early warning system, whether they want it or whether they don't want it. This is just, I'm throwing numbers down here tonight to council to tell you what it would take to get it done. Some of this is going to reflect back on us to... And this portion of it doesn't cover everything. Some of it will have to be handled in-house. Would be our responsibility. Like taking a siren down and taking up their mounting, that would be on us. Reinstall a siren would be on us. Applying power to that would be on us, which Chris can do that. He's a master electrician.
Oh, climate fair.
He's not a master electrician. So there's something called... Basically, what this $6,200 is, is the pressure better just than I am, but it's the signal that's going to have to be put in place for the sheriff's department to throw a switch in the siren.
And get it to on.
So that's all.
I like the idea of trying to get the public involved in that case. It's the amount of interest that, you know...
I mean, we, you know, they can pledge money. Goods can pledge money or something. And we'll see how it starts out, but hell, it's going to go.
And vote America.
There's nothing you can't do. And I just feel like if, if we have the backing of the fire department, I mean, you know, there's safety. I don't know why we wouldn't either. I think they'd be all right with doing that. I think it would be beneficial.
Okay. So...
I mean, I have no reason why we can't go ahead and say that we're thinking about starting some fun and seeing where we can get and putting in the cost, the total cost of it, plus the other things that will be handled in-house. And then in the next month, if we get the backing of the emergency services, basically, I think that maybe we can re-put it again. And at that time, maybe... Well, that's why I said people can pledge money.
Yeah.
You know, instead of just giving money, make a pledge of so much. And if it's an organization in town, I think you can pretty much guarantee that you're going to get what they pledge. Some people will pledge money. But I don't think you want to set something up and then have you're sure that we got to get their money back, because we just can't do it, so.
That's the reason we're having this discussion.
Yeah. I think that getting pledges from different people and different organizations would be the way to go until, you know, if we're close, then maybe we can enable and Ralphie can get some people to, you know, have a debate, say, I don't know. But anyway, it's possible that if you get close enough, we'll be able to get it.
How can we raise the money for that annual fee? Well, you try.
So council has decided we'll move forward with talking with that route. The emergency squad, and if we can come to some type of agreement, then we'll move forward and put in the New Parish News that we're asking for pledges from the community to reach the amount of 6,206.50. To move aside.
And if we know what we can safely pledge, I think that ought to be in there. You know, so that they're not, you know, people think that we just are rolling around with money down there. We're not. But I think if they know we're serious and that we're making it ever to do what we can for this, then it might be a difference.
Okay, Ralph, if you would take it from yourself, please, to relay this number to the fire department, to have the mercy to sign with it and get their donations on it. And then next month, then we can get something together to go in the parish news and start asking for pledges.
Well, their next meeting is your second Monday of the month. So it probably will be after our next meeting.
Okay. Well, you can at least let it out. I think we talked about it. See, at least give a general feeling of, you know, what they think about it, whatever. Okay. We had, I had asked Kathy sometime back about the possibility of a website or joining the website of the chamber. Kathy, if you would like to elaborate on this.
I talked to Colin Yatman, took a week to know about it. He suggested that the village of New Parish, a governmental entity, needed some website. That it would be linked to the website of the Chamber of Commerce, which would be a link and a positive link for the work of the part. I also ask him, of course, the numbers, because I have no idea to, for you to build the site for us and make it an attractive site. And we could set up emails for all the council people, board people. And an email that links your name to the mini server line or your area of expertise with council or whatever. So that you can get an email from somebody. And Jana's not trying to chase you down with a phone call. I know she emails us when she has things going on, but it might take a little something off her. I don't know. It's better than getting phone calls in the middle of the night if you have an email out there. It would be a roster. It could be a calendar that could be, you know, your minutes could be published on that. I know we already have Jeff Goldblum's website. He does a good job, but it's not our website. And, you know, I don't know how much control we want over it or not. So I'm reporting that for who set the thing up and to make it nice for us, it would cost $500, like a one-time fee. There's a, he would have to have a domain name, so he would have to set that up for us, get us one, he feels that he could get us one that we can put New Parish in as search engine. Our site could come up first. I don't know how important that is to you, but sometimes people will go down to the fifth or sixth one. They go to the first one. So he could link it to Chambers. There is a $30 fee for the domain name, and that's an annual fee to keep the name up, whatever we want to set up. And there's also a $3 a month fee for maintenance. And he could change ad, put the minutes on, whatever we need to do. Updating your website monthly. I don't know if you're interested in that at all. I have no idea. But that's the report I got, and I told him, you know, we're just, let's feel it out there. See what's available. And I had no idea what cost would be. So it's a thought to take with you tonight and see if you think we're interested in doing that or not. I haven't gone any further than that with it, just getting some raw numbers.
Yeah, and the whitewest have a sand tree. They have beaten all of them out of a website, which I know that there's the, they have their ordinances and everything on it.
And if those things are sent to him in an email, it's no problem for him to just slap them right on there. I mean, it's all that fast, you know. So if they're in the computer anyway, and they're attached and there's an attachment, it's my understanding that they just go directly in there and find, so.
Okay, well, take this also with you tonight, and we'll further discussion on that next month as to what kind of things they would like to do with this or if we're not.
I'm not advocating, but I did, you know, want to see... I just wanted to find out what it would take to get it set up and running. And it would be hours. And we might have a more control of the, yeah, of just of the general feeling of the website. Sometimes it gets a little better in other places.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Does anyone have anything else?
I didn't.
Yes.
And maybe it's, I'm going to direct it to the safety committee.
Who is it?
I've seen a lot of, like... They're not golf carts. I don't know. Maybe they are golf carts. Running around town. Some young people. Maybe a lot of them are from the resort down here, but they don't have license on them. And I don't want to hurt anybody's business, you know. Plus, they probably look like, maybe they've been to the dollar store or that, carry out or wherever, and, but they're not licensed. And I know at one time, we had a hard time getting golf carts off the streets. I just don't want to see us, see these things coming back and having a hard time with them, especially with the young, some of the young kids. So I know we have our little cart license, so I just wanted to bring that up. And it's scary, because if that's what they're doing, they're right on the state highway there. And, you know, it's convenient, so.
How young are you talking about?
Pardon me?
You talking about like 12, 13-year-olds? Some of them.
Yeah, some of them are. But that'd be a license. It really doesn't matter, though, to me, what age group it is. I don't want to see the young people driving them, but the older people are driving them too with no license plates on them.
Golf cart does not have to be licensed.
Just a slow-moving vehicle signs, all they need to do.
Has to be a licensed driver. They have to have insurance on it. Slow-moving vehicle sign, maybe not.
I didn't know that. So is that what, are those considered golf carts if they're driving them?
Most of them. Yeah, there is a, what they call a mule, which is more of a motorcycle type thing. Comes into town once in a while. We've got on that person. If we see a kid on it, you know, we've written tickets for that and made them stop.
We could always pass an ordinance where you have to register if you want to run it around the town and it's charged $100.
So let's back up here a little bit on that because...
That might be...
Let's back up there a little bit on that, because we have a resort down here that brings a lot of people to town. And some of those people ride their golf carts to the businesses that are in town. So let's, let's try, let's try, let's try and keep this in perspective a little bit here. Let's not get crazy on it. I mean, as Chris says, if there's got to be a licensed driver and you're going to have a slow-moving sign on that, I know we have a couple of young men run around with a one golf cart with a little bit of steering wheel that they're kind of running wild. I don't know what their age is, but you might keep an eye on them. I don't know. Unless it gets, unless it gets to be a real problem. I don't know that we want to get carried away with too big an ordinance here.
Yeah.
Considering the fact that that generates a lot of business down there.
Yeah, I know. They use, I've seen them have to carry out.
I agree with you. I've seen one myself. Most of the ones I have seen, I've seen with the slow-moving signs on them.
I did see one the other day.
Most of the ones I have seen has had one there. There is one, a couple of young guys that's running around town on a golf cart. I don't know their age. I think they got a slow-moving sign on their, on their golf cart, but they're just being kids and being here and there and everywhere.
Well, I didn't know what that, I didn't know. I didn't know.
Yeah. I think at this point, we just, you know, have the chief to keep an eye on things. If it gets to be a continued problem, and in the future, it may come to a point where we have to have a harsher discussion about it, but I don't want to get in a position here where we're talking about ordinances and stuff on golf carts at this point. This could affect that decision.
No, but I've seen, I've seen them now in some people's jars too, that live here.
There's several.
Yeah.
I'm one myself. I have no problem.
Some of those residents even have the turn signals and stuff on them. So they're all, they're all at the date, so, I mean, that's...
Well, I didn't know what the law was, and I just don't want it to get out of hand. I know that at one time, there was a problem with a golf cart.
Well, like I say, I agree with the fact that we need to keep an eye on it. I agree with the fact that, you know, we'll let the chief do his job. I don't think we want to get in a position of talking about ordinances and stuff against it. I know I wouldn't want that to get out to the park.
Yeah, that would...
We're thinking about it.
No. No, I don't want to hurt anybody at all. We need all the business here.
Registration fee might be in order, where it would.
Well, so everybody comes down here and you're going to make them pay a registration fee to pick their carts.
All this just weekend campers?
Yeah, you can't. See what I'm saying? You can't carry away there.
I know. We're talking about people that...
Well, how do you distinguish, I mean, who's camping? I mean, you've got to be careful here to get carried away, you guys. So, yeah. So we'll keep an eye on that as far as, at this point, talking about.
Chris, a mule doesn't come under the same category as a golf cart. A mule doesn't come under the same category as a golf cart. A mule is considered a lot... Off-road mule.
Just like the gager? Yes. You either have to register it or it cannot be off the road. There's one or two that come into town, the gager, and they have a slow-moving vehicle sign. And we've stopped them before it's on right, you know. Because the sheriff's office only forces that out of the county. This is well, you know, just like you will attack. You know, if it's called on the roadway, you know, they get a ticket and you can catch them too. But yeah, the ORCs specify it's golf carts. All right, then, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn. And the next meeting will be October 7th at 7:00.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll say that.
If all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.